Hi everybody, welcome to the Battle of the Books Quiz Center Study Session Number One. We're going to be talking about the book The Midnight Children by Dankum Einhardt. This is my first video study session that I've created and I chose this book because I just, I really, really love this book. I enjoyed and loved most of the books that I've read this year, but this one just really struck a special chord in me and so I chose it to be the first one that I tried this with. Before you go any further, I need to warn you that this video is going to be completely full of spoilers. From the beginning to the middle to the end of the book, this video is designed to help people study and really get to know the book completely. So it's good for Battle of the Books competitions or other kinds of contests or games or lessons, literature circles, but please don't watch this without reading the book first because you're going to be disappointed I'm going to be giving all the endings away. So you have been warned. One of the things that this book, The Midnight Children discusses several times throughout the book is what a soul needs and deserves. So it begins with, every soul deserves and needs a home and a family. But the point of this book is that families can look very different from one another and they don't have to be made just of people who are related by blood. So the name of the town that this book takes place in is called Slaughterville. And the reason is because the main business of the town is the slaughterhouse, which you can see in this picture, a slaughterhouse is where they, in this book, they're killing cows and butchering them, cutting them up and then making them into sausage and burgers and other things. So there's this big slaughterhouse in town and a lot of the people that live in the town work there. The slaughterhouse is on Skinnerster Street and I don't know, when I hear the word Skinnerster, it makes me think of animal skins. I know this is kind of gross, but whatever, like helps you remember, right? It also rhymes with sinister, so I don't know, that kind of stuck in my head too. So the owner and operator of the slaughterhouse is named Sturgis Skinnerster. And I was thinking, I guess because his name rhymes with sinister and his work involves killing and chopping up animals, that I was thinking that maybe he was going to be this mean nasty guy. But that's not the case. He ends up being a really good guy and sort of, and definitely one of the heroes in this book. He also works as the town's local judge, which that comes up later as being a very important thing. The name of the main character in this book, the protagonist, is Ravani Foster. And he's about 10 years old and he lives on Awful Road near Carcass Creek. Again, these words of names in the town are related to the main industry of the town. So the word awful, awful, it sounds like awful, like that's awful, but it's, you can see it spelled O-F-F-A-L. And this beautiful picture shows you what it means. It's the guts from the inside of an animal that's been butchered. A lot of times or most of the times, the slaughterhouses throw this stuff away, the awful, but people eat parts of it too. People eat lots of the internal organs of cows, like the hearts and the liver and tripas and other parts. So not everything is wasted or thrown away. So the other word, Carcass Creek, carcass means the, like in the picture there, it's the dead body of an animal. So back to Ravani Foster. Ravani Foster lives in a house at the end of Awful Road and he loves birds and he loves to make birdhouses. He's a very sort of quiet, sensitive boy and he's lonely. He's a lonely kid who doesn't have any friends. He feels different than the rest of people and so, so he's lonely, but he makes birdhouses. That's his thing. Nut hatches and finches are birds and these are the kind of birds that Ravani builds birdhouses for. So one night, in the middle of the night, Ravani's in bed sleeping and he is awoken by just this strong feeling of loneliness and he starts to cry in bed. But suddenly he just gets up and goes to his window and looks outside and he sees a white truck and seven kids get out of it. They're all holding suitcases. They're all ranging in ages from about five to late teens. He can't tell for sure because it's dark outside, but he can see their heights. So they all get out of this truck and go walking toward the other house that's across the street from Ravani's. The littlest girl is carrying a stuffed giraffe and the one girl who's about his age is carrying a white parasol. The house that the kids are walking into is owned by Mr. Arthur Croward, who's an elderly man who lived there before, but he had to move to a retirement home after he broke his hip. So basically it's just, this house has been sitting there vacant and now these kids are walking into it with their suitcases. The last person to go into the house, into Mr. Croward's house, is the girl who's about Ravani's age and she's carrying a parasol, a white parasol. She's got blonde hair that's like in the moonlight, it looks like it's silver to him. And the parasol, what a parasol is, is it's like an umbrella, but it's not used for rain. It's very delicate and people use parasols to protect themselves from the sun. So why she has it out in the middle of the night, I don't know, but that's what it is. Ravani Foster's dad worked at the slaughterhouse, like a lot of people did in this town, in the town of Slaughterville. And he often forgot to bring his lunch to work. So Ravani would have to take it to him. His mom would make lunch for his dad and ask Ravani to take it to him at his work. So every time that Ravani's mom did this, sent Ravani with lunch for his dad, she also sent extra for his boss, Mr. Skinnerster, at the slaughterhouse. She sent him some to eat also. So this one day she sent empanadas, which are like, if you look at the picture, they look kind of like Hot Pockets or they also are kind of like calzones. Calzones? Whatever those are called, the Italian food calzones, they're, they're like pies filled with filling, but not sweet, like with meat and potatoes and things. The empanadas that Ravani's mom sent him with to take the lunch to his dad at the slaughterhouse, they were filled with leeks, which are kind of like huge green onions, sweet potatoes, garlic and roasted jalapenos. Sounds pretty delicious, yeah? But Mr. Skinnerster, he tried them and he liked them, but it surprised him and confused him that there was no meat inside them. Basically, Mr. Skinnerster thought that all meals contained meat. So he was sort of surprised that he even liked them. In a lot of stories with brave, good main characters, there's often bullies and there are bullies in this story as well. Donnie Carter is the bully who picks on Ravani. Donnie has a friend Stevie, but just Stevie just sort of tags along and does whatever Donnie tells him to do. But Donnie Carter's really mean and really picks on Ravani a lot. He calls him ravioli. And his dad happens to be the foreman at the slaughterhouse, so basically kind of up a level from Ravani's dad. Donnie Carter's dad is named Carl Carter, who's not, he's not very nice to his own son, so it's kind of like the nastiness gets passed down. His dad's nasty and mean to Donnie. Donnie turns around, is nasty and mean to someone else that he feels can't protect himself. So that's often the story of bullies. So every year, on the Fourth of July, in the town of Slaughterville, they had a Red River Raft Race. And what you needed to participate was to have a boat that you made yourself. It had to be a self-made boat and you needed to have a friend. You had to sail your boat in pairs. And so Ravani had never been very interested in the Red River Raft Race because he didn't have a boat and he didn't have any friends. So every year, on the Fourth of July, in the town of Slaughterville, they had a Red River Raft Race. And what you needed to participate was to have a boat that you made yourself. It had to be a self-made boat and you needed to have a friend. You had to sail your boat in pairs. And so Ravani had never been very interested in the Red River Raft Race because he didn't have a boat and he didn't have any friends. So every year, on the Fourth of July, after Ravani delivered the empanadas, the lunch, to his dad and Mr. Skinnerster at the slaughterhouse, he was coming back home from there and he decided to go through the forest and around the back so that he could come around the back of Mr. Croward's house because he was thinking and thinking about these seven kids he saw go in in the middle of the night and he wanted to peek through the windows and see what he could see. So while Ravani was walking from the slaughterhouse toward the forest to go home, he came like to the end of the pasture where the cows were that were going to end up being slaughtered. And he, this cow came up to him and it was brown with this white spot in the middle of her head that was like in the shape of a four-leaf clover. So he decided to name this cow Lucky. And he knew that this was a bad idea because his dad, if anyone found out, his dad would probably be fired, but he just really loved this cow and bonded with it or something. So he opened the gate and let it out because he didn't want the cow to end up becoming a hamburger. After setting Lucky the cow free, Ravani continued on his way home and he went through the forest, which he loved. And in the forest, he had cleared out this secret place that was his own special place to hang out and just be at peace. And he filled it with all these birdhouses that he had made. And he named this place in the forest, Haven Hollow. After leaving Haven Hollow in the woods, in the forest, where all the birdhouses were hung, he continued and when he got near the Croward House, he heard a boy and a girl right next to Carcass Creek that was running behind the houses. And he heard the boy say to the girl that if she really wanted a frog for her birthday, he would catch her one. So he kept, the boy was trying to catch a frog in the, in the Carcass Creek, but he couldn't because they were too fast and they kept hopping away. So the girl did not get a frog for her birthday from her brother. Notice in this slide, I tell you that the girl's name is Virginia. Like I said, I'm giving away all the surprises, but anyway, yeah, her name is Virginia and the boy's name happens to be Colt. You'll find out more about them later. The day went on and Ravani was in his house, dinner with his parents and was thinking about this girl whose birthday it was who wanted a frog and didn't get one. And so, and that he saw fireflies blinking outside. They lived in a place where fireflies are. I wish we had fireflies here. I love them, they're so pretty. Anyway, he goes outside and went to catch a frog for Virginia because Ravani was really good at catching frogs. And not only did he get a frog for her and put it in a jar, but he also caught seven fireflies and put them in a separate jar. You probably know why he would not put the fireflies in the same jar with the frog, because the frog would eat them. I wonder if the frog would like be glowing if it ate them? That's an experiment for later. Or not an experiment, research. So he took these jars and went to the back of the Croward House and he melted the bottom of a candle so it would stick to the top of the jar and, and put a candle, a lit candle, like a birthday candle on the jar and just left it there and went home. So he wasn't sure yet if she would take the present or what she would think or what would happen. So there they were and he went to bed. In the meantime, elsewhere, there's this mean man named The Hunter. And he had white hair and really piercing blue eyes and really long sharp fingernails. They kept sharp. And he was a hunter of children, not to do anything well. He would take them to the orphanage. That's what he hunted them for. He worked for the orphanage and so he would, he was really into it though. He was like really excited about his job, hunting children to bring them to the orphanage. And he would keep the lights off in his house so that his eyes would always be used to the dark. Ravani's mom was an artist. She painted and Ravani would often bring her pictures of things to paint, like pictures of birds and things, beautiful things to paint. When Ravani and Virginia finally met face to face, and he knew that she had gotten the present of the frog and the fireplace because when he looked out his window that night, he saw a jar full of fireflies sitting in her window sill. So I think she left it there kind of as a sign to him that yes, she got and accepted and loved the present. So when they finally met the next day, he was sort of in shock or just, he was shy anyway. So he was just sort of standing there looking at her and not speaking. And she said to him, if you won't talk to people, then you don't need to worry about us because we're not really people, we're ghosts. So that was kind of a weird and mysterious thing to say, but you know, the kids weren't, they weren't dead and they weren't ghosts. They were just, they lived a life in which no one knew their real names and they were always sort of on the run and hiding. So that's why she said that they were ghosts. Ravani admitted or told the story to Virginia that his name was for a dessert in Greece that's very sweet. This was pretty cool because I typed in the word Ravani. I didn't know that I would actually find a picture of that actual dessert, but there it is. That's what Ravani looks like, this sweet dessert from Greece. So anyway, his mother named him that because she had tried it and it was very sweet and his mother thought when he was born, he was just the sweetest thing ever. And so she named him Ravani. And after telling that story to Virginia, she grabbed his arm and licked it and told him that he was not sweet, he was salty. So Virginia, she had some mixed feelings. I think she was being kind of pulled in two different directions because she was lonely too. Her and her siblings were like living a life in hiding and on the run all the time. So she, she liked Ravani and, and he was a nice boy who'd given her this present, but when he said happy birthday to her, her reply to him was, I'm not looking for a friend, which seems kind of cold. Three times a week Ravani delivered newspapers in the town of Slaughterville. I think it was a fairly small town. I don't know if kids deliver newspapers anymore like this. They, they used to. When I was young, kids would have paper routes and carry newspapers in their bikes like this in a basket and throw them onto people's porches and lawns. I guess there's a lot more traffic now. Maybe it's still done in small towns, I'm not sure. Anyway, this is what Ravani did three times a week and he worked for the newspaper called the, the Slaughterville Spectator. That was the name of the newspaper in the town. The owner, manager, journalist, editor, everything of, like I said, it's a small town. So it was probably, maybe it was a one-woman newspaper office. They didn't specify that, but this woman, Hortense Wallenbach, did all these jobs. And so basically this is Ravani's boss of his job delivering newspapers. And she was really cool and really fun and funny and she loved making up just wild creative stories. And, and she and Ravani had a good relationship and so they had this thing where every day he would come into the office or every day that he worked, the three days a week, he would come into the newspaper office to get the papers and he'd say, what's the news? And Hortense Wallenbach would reply, read it and find out. One of Ravani's newspaper customers that he delivered newspapers to was Fred Frotham at Fred's Cafe. The cafe was named after Fred because Fred inherited the business, the cafe, from his family. So that's where he is and he's working. He's good natured and happy and stuff, but his true dream is to be an actor. Anyway, Ravani really likes seeing him and talking with him because Fred likes to do voices and, and you know, practices his acting chops and makes up stories and speaks with an accent and stuff like that. After Ravani was done with his paper route, he was walking home and along the way, he happened to glance down an alley and saw the bully, his nemesis, Donnie Carter and Donnie's friend Stevie, trying to trap a cat. They, they had like a box set up with a stick with a, with a string tied to it and a piece of hot dog underneath it. And there was this skinny, sad little stray cat that was going toward the trap. And who knows what they were going to do to that poor cat, but it wasn't going to be good because they were mean kids. So Ravani saw them and picked up a can and threw it to scare the cat. And so yeah, the cat ran away, but Donnie saw him. And so Donnie and Stevie chased Ravani into the forest and while he was running, Ravani tripped over a branch and then they grabbed him and Donnie held him and tried to spit into his mouth, which is really gross. Ravani turned his head and just got to spit on the side of his cheek, which is also really gross. Anyway, so there they were. Just, you know, bullying and beating up and doing nasty things, trying to spit in Ravani's mouth and all of a sudden rocks start flying out, out of who knows where in the forest, but they start flying in and hit Donnie and Stevie. One of Virginia's sisters, one of the seven kids that moved into Mr. Croward's house was named Annabelle. She was the littlest one. So she's like five years old and her most prized possession was her binoculars. She just loved her binoculars. Virginia asked Ravani to teach her how to catch frogs because even though she had her own frog now, she wanted to know how to catch them herself. And what Ravani explained was the trick to catching frogs was not being fast, it was being very still, just holding really still and then grabbing them. The oldest boy, the oldest kid in the group of the seven kids was named Tristan and he was like the father figure to the group. He was probably 16 or 17. I know he was not 18 because at 18, he would have to leave the group and I'll tell you why in a bit. But anyway, he was, he was kind of the leader of the group. Tristan, that oldest boy, he was very protective of, of the group, of the family. And so that's why he told Ravani, he thanked Ravani for being nice and helping catch a frog, but he told him not to come around. But Virginia whispered to Ravani, meet me at the graveyard at midnight. She wanted to talk to him. So they did, they, they went out there and met and they happened to see a fire burning in the, in the graveyard. Like a campfire, it wasn't on fire. There was a campfire burning in the graveyard and it was Donnie Carter and his friend Stevie who had built the campfire in the graveyard. But Donnie did hear something. He didn't know who it was, but he heard some noises and so he's like, Stevie, let's go, someone's watching us. There's somebody out there. So they start running toward Ravani and Virginia. Ravani and Virginia are running away into the forest and they get down to hide and Ravani found a great hiding place, like under this bush, a hollow there. But instead of just taking it for himself, he gave the hiding place to Virginia, which showed Virginia what kind of person he was and it made her trust him more. And so after, they, they did escape from Donnie and Stevie, but she told Ravani that she had secrets and she was going to tell him. And the first secret that she told him was that she had secrets. Virginia had a special power, a special gift that she could tell just by looking at a person's face, listening to their voice, she could tell if anybody was telling a lie. And so when Ravani told her, you know, that he had friends or was saying, oh yeah, I have a friend who lives over there, she just said, liar, you're lying. And finally, he admitted to her that he did not have any friends. And she knew that he was telling the truth. Well, like before, Virginia said she wasn't looking for a friend. And the reason she wasn't looking for a friend and the reason why her oldest brother Tristan was so guarded and, and you know, protective was because they were taking big risks. Anybody that, that knew their living situation would put a stop to it. So it was a big thing for her to get to trust a person. But, but she did. She was more and more beginning to trust Ravani because she knew that he was really a good person. And she told him that they couldn't be friends, but they could be comrades. And they defined comrades as someone who is on your side. A person who's on your side is your comrade. Virginia and Ravani went into the Bread and Butter Bakery, which was owned and operated by Lee Chin. And Virginia wanted a cupcake, but Mr. Chin said, we don't do cupcakes here, we only do loaves of bread. And she asked why and his answer was just that, that's all they, that's what they, how they had always done it. It was another family business, passed down, 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 and they only ever made loaves of bread. While Ravani and Virginia were walking through the town after the paper route, they ran into Donnie Carter and Stevie. And Donnie, of course, was, was rude and mean to them. And he called them, the two of them, Ravani and Virginia, the creep and the freak. And what really made him mad was that Virginia just laughed at him for that. She thought it was great. She, she, she made fun of him. She says, oh, we should make t-shirts that say that, that's cool. So it really upset Donnie that he wasn't able to get her goat and get her really mad. And so then he called her trash. He says, you're trash. And she said, no, I'm not, I'm gold and so is Ravani. So I think the cool thing was is that Virginia never like attacked Donnie back. She didn't try to be mean to him. She just stood up strongly for herself and confidently and said, no, you're wrong. I'm, I'm gold, so is my friend. Here are the names of all seven Ragabonds. Ragabonds is the name of their group. Their family is called the Ragabonds. They're in order from oldest to youngest, Tristan, the oldest boy, Beth, the oldest girl, then Colt, then Virginia, Ravani's friend, twins Winnie and Benjamin, and the youngest Annabelle. Now, I made up a mnemonic device to help you remember their names in order. A mnemonic device is just a trick to help you remember anything. So not only can you use this little sentence that I made up to remember their names, remember this in the future to remember anything, whenever you know that you're going to have a test on something, whether it's geography or, or math or social studies, history, anything, if you have a list of things, you can, you can do this trick, which is taking the first letter of each of the words and then making a sentence, which is way easier to remember than remembering all the names separately. So I made up the sentence with just the first letter of each of their names. Trapped bears could very well be angry, which is true. So all I have to do is remember that and now I've got the first letter of each kid's name. Trapped, T for Tristan, bears, B for Beth, can, C for Colt, V, very, for Virginia, very well, B, W for Winnie, B for Benjamin, angry, A for Annabelle. Okay? So that's how you use it to remember all their names. Okay, so that's how you use it to remember all their names. The Ragabond's last name is Deering. So I made up this silly pair of pictures just to make a visual deer ring. Okay, but um, they change their name whenever they move to a different town. Because they have to, because somebody is close to finding them and catching them, then they move to a different town and they change their last name again. But for now, in Slaughterville, their last name is Deering. Ravani was an only child. His parents, especially his mom, really wanted more children. They wanted to have a big family, but she couldn't have any more children physically. Uh, she had had several miscarriages, which means that she was gonna have a baby and it didn't it didn't make it to be born, uh, which happens to some people. And so it was something that made not only Ravani's mom sad, but it made Ravani sad. Um, so the I'm talking about this because it becomes very important at the end of this book. Uh, so anyway, Ravani's mom also dreamed of being a chef, a painter, or a pianist. Which I know she was, she was a painter, an artist and played piano. And that comes later too, because she ends up teaching Virginia how to play piano. As I said, Ravani's mom taught Virginia how to play piano. Um, Virginia had always wanted to learn piano and so Ravani's mom offered to teach her. The piano was at Ravani's house. Virginia is a Ragabond. She did not have a piano. So what did she do? Because Virginia didn't have a piano of her own to practice on, she drew one. She made one on paper. And she actually would practice on it with her fingers. And so she showed the paper piano to Ravani. And first she was kind of angry at him because he thought it was silly, but she told him to close his eyes and really listen, listen with his heart. And when he did, he was actually able to hear music playing. As I said at the beginning, there's a lot of talk of what about souls and what souls need or what they want. And so this line, sometimes when a soul is very sad, it wants to not be sad alone. So Ravani was talking to Virginia about his mother, about how she wanted more children but couldn't have any, how it made her sad, it made him sad, which he felt kind of like silly for feeling sad about that. But Virginia told him it wasn't silly to be sad about this. And she hugged him and uh, that's, that's the point of this saying about what a soul wants is it's not possible to never be sad. There's, there's going to be things that make us feel sad sometimes. But it helps when we have someone to to be with and to comfort us. And that's what Ravani needed and what Virginia gave to him. So the bigs, and that's also, she finally got to the point where she was ready to tell Ravani the big secret of the Deering family, which was that there were no parents. They were all uh, orphans. So by telling Ravani this big secret, it was a big risk. Because if any authorities or or the orphanage found out or the police or anything, they would, they would take the children and put them in the orphanage or in foster care because it's not legal for kids to be living on their own. I mean, even together as a group, there has to be an adult in charge. And there wasn't. The oldest was Tristan. Uh, he's the one that acted as the father figure. And and it seems like Beth sort of was acting as sort of a a mother figure too. Um, but also the thing is that when the Ragabonds, whenever one of them turned eighteen, they had to leave the group. It always had to be just kids in the group. So it was something that had been going on for years and years, centuries. Anyway, the term or the phrase used for Virginia telling Ravani the truth about their their family was called speaking him in. Virginia spoke Ravani in, which kind of freaked out her siblings, especially Tristan. Because the more someone knows your secret, the more likely it is that it's gonna get out to everybody else. So it took a lot of trust for her to tell Ravani about them. Tristan's role in in the group, in the Ragabonds, was called the shepherd. The oldest in the group, their title was always called the shepherd, like a shepherd leads and takes care of a group of sheep. So the shepherd always took care of the group of kids. So the one that had been with them before, before Tristan took over as shepherd was named Charlotte. But then she turned eighteen, so she had to leave. She became a doctor. So this is also how the Ragabonds were able to afford things like rent, like like food, uh, electricity for the house, you know. It was from the rat, the past Ragabonds grew up, left and and started their own lives in professions and stuff, but they always would send money or take care of things for the the group of kids that was still in the group of Ragabonds. The only two of the Ragabonds in this family of seven that were actually related to each other by blood were Winnie and Benjamin, because they were twins. Uh, none of the other Ragabonds were actually related to each other by blood. So where did all these, where do all the Ragabonds come from? They, some of them were abandoned as babies. Uh, some of them, their their parents died when they were very young. Some of them, they didn't remember. They were so young when they became Ragabonds that they didn't even remember when it happened or or how they became part of the group. None of the Ragabonds wanted to go to the orphanage. They they felt that the orphanages were uh, they weren't like being a family, not like being a family in a in a home. And being together as a group, as Ragabonds, they were a family. Like I said at the beginning of this of this video, uh, families can look very different from one another and they aren't always made of people related by blood. Even more typical situations, you have families made of stepbrothers and stepsisters. Um, so this, the Ragabonds was just another example. But so they did not want to be caught and forced to go into orphanages. Plus then they'd be separated. Um, wolves was the churn that they had for people who wanted to catch them and put them in the orphanage. And the hunter in this story was a wolf. Ravani asked the kids when when they all talked to him about it, because once he knew, Virginia told them that he knew, they all brought him in, like they had a big meeting with Ravani. And he asked them what it was like being a Ragabond. And so and living without any parents being in charge. And what the kids told that told Ravani was that it was fun, but it was also really hard, sometimes scary, very tiring, but but it was also fun. Um, you know, because nobody told them when to go to bed or things like that. But the thing about this book is that even though they didn't have parents telling them what to do, they were very responsible as a group. They looked out for one another and they shared the chores and and jobs. They they, they weren't just running wild like like, you know, oh, boy, there's nobody telling us what to do. We're just gonna go wild. They they weren't doing that. They were. And if they had, it wouldn't have lasted, of course. They would have gotten caught. So uh, yeah. So there was this book called The Always and Forever. And Always and Forever had all the names of all the Ragabonds that had ever been, uh, along with, you know, their personal histories. And uh, there there was a private part of the book that that Ravani was not allowed to look at. In fact, it was private to just sections, private only for each of the Ragabonds that where they wrote their own memories and their real names that they were born with if they knew them, uh, their histories, their their hopes and fears and memories, things like that. It was very a a private thing. But the other part of the book where it listed the names of not just Ragabonds, but also angels, which was the people that would that helped them. They weren't Ragabonds, but people that they could trust that would help them uh, you know, survive and be safe, but not get caught. The first angel was in eighteen eighteen, the year eighteen eighteen, and her name was Rebecca Hempstead. And she lived in Fort Mill, South Carolina. She was listed in the book, the now Always and Forever book as the first angel, person that was dedicated to helping and protecting the Ragabonds. So the Ragabonds took a pledge. They they had a pledge that they would say. And it always started with them saying what they were not. Things like, I am not useless. I am not unwanted. I'm not scared. I'm not lonely. And then ending with what they were. And they always said, what I am, I am a Ragabond. To officially become an angel, Ravani had to sign his name in the book, in the Always and Forever book. And by signing his name in it, he was taking a very solemn promise that he would uh, help them, but also that he would never tell anybody their secret. And then Ravani also did a pledge where he had to say what he was not. And so when he did that, uh, he was very tempted. Ravani, remember, he had had a hard time growing up, no friends, real shy, quiet, felt kind of different and odd. So he was tempted to to say, um, you know, things like lonely or pathetic or worthless or strange. But he didn't say that. He just said, I am not a wolf. And then when he said what he was, he was supposed to say, I'm an angel, but he said, I am a comrade, which was the thing between him and Virginia, that they were people who were on each other's side. These were two words discussed in in the book. I just thought this was sort of beautiful. Two words that sound almost exactly the same, or a word and two words, uh, but mean pretty much the opposite. Apart. So you see that the one person is apart from the rest, being separated, being outside of the circle, being apart. And then a part, like being a part of a family, a part of a team, a part of a group. They're like opposites. And that's how Ravani felt, that he had gone from being apart from everyone else to being a part of a group. Ragabonds had magic, magic that helped them survive and stay safe and stay uncaught. You know, making, helping them avoid being captured and sent to an orphanage, um, just helping them live and thrive. But it wasn't, it wasn't magic that you typically think, like none of the Ragabonds could fly or or become invisible, nothing like that. Okay, they had these special, in fact, this is what they called it. They called it their special. They had special abilities that helped them and helped the group. So Tristan's special was that he would sort of just hear uh, the magic calling to him when it was time to run. Uh, when someone was getting close, he would know. He would know it was time to pack up the Ragabonds and get out of town. And one time when some of them were captured and put into the orphanage, which was called Madame Mad- Madame Mordosa's Orphanage. Again, the name Mordosa reminds me of the word murder, so it sounds bad. Uh, and she was me. So they, some of them were caught and they were inside. And so Tristan was not caught and he went to rescue them, to get them out of the orphanage at night. And Madame Mordosa always locked the windows, locked the doors, but somehow, the Ragabond magic made one of the windows be unlocked and Tristan was able to get inside. And then when she almost caught him, when she almost saw him, right then her telephone rang. So stuff like that. Uh, that's the kind of magic that that Tristan had. The hunter drove an ice cream truck, which was basically a disguise. And a disguise that would bring children near to him. Because children often wanna go buy ice cream. They hear the ice cream truck coming, they're, they come running. So that was his perfect disguise uh, of driving an ice cream truck. So Madame Mordosa called him to catch these seven kids that were the Ragabonds. And so he came to the orphanage and he found this scrap of paper lying on a dirt road nearby the orphanage. And that led him eventually to find where the Ragabonds had ended up. This is kind of random, right in the middle, but uh, Mr. Skinnerster, the the owner of of Skinnerster Quality Meats, who ran the slaughterhouse, he was talking with Ravani and Virginia and Colt. Colt is Virginia's uh, older brother. And they were talking and Mr. Skinnerster mentioned how cows and hamburgers are both really nice things to look at. But the steps in between them are not so nice to look at. And then Colt made a joke. He said to, he said to Mr. Skinnerster that pea soup was better than roast beef. And Mr. Skinner, Mr. Skinnerster said, why? Why do you think pea soup is better than roast beef? And Colt said, because anybody can roast beef. You get it? Nobody can pea soup. Something Colt shared that he ended up getting to use at the end of the book was that for some reason, maybe he heard it in a TV show or a movie, I'm not sure, but uh, he always wished that he had the chance to use the words, lay it on me, old man, which is something like, lay it on me means tell it to me. Okay, I looked it up. I looked into the book for this. I had to know. He heard it on a radio show. That's where he heard this saying, lay it on me, old man. And ever since he heard that on the radio, he wanted to have the chance to use it. Mr. Crowder, the man who owned the house where the Ragabonds were living across the street from Ravani, used to run a funeral home. That's what he did for his business. And so the basement of the house was filled with caskets, also called coffins, the boxes dead people are buried in. Uh, and this comes in handy because Virginia gets the idea of using a coffin and making it into a boat for the Red River Raff Race, which she wanted to enter with Ravani. The front part of a boat is called the bow. Bow is spelled the same way as bow, like a bow in your hair or tying a bow. Uh, but it's, it sounds different. When you say bow, well, I guess there's also taking a bow, but so this is another bow. The bow of a boat is the front of the boat. So the bow of the coffin boat was the front of it. Ravani, Colt and Virginia were talking about their situation. And they were telling him how, yeah, people were looking for them and wanted to capture them and send them back to the orphanage. But but Tristan would want Virginia to to be in the raft race and stuff like that, because part of their plan was to become um, known in town. So that they became part of the scenery, so they didn't stick out or look out of the ordinary. So um, so they were talking about this and they didn't know that Donnie Carter was under the bridge and heard the whole thing. And this is the completely wrong person that you would ever want to know their secret. Later, Donnie found Ravani and confronted him and told him that he heard the secret. And so he was in a perfect position to blackmail Ravani. And so Ravani promised Donnie that he would give him all the money he had ever earned from his paper route and all the money afterwards, like he'll, he would keep on doing the paper route and give Donnie all the money from it. Uh, what he, what Ravani really should have done was tell the Ragabonds, because they were in danger. The minute, the minute Donnie knew they were in danger of being caught. But as the book said, a favorite lie a soul tells itself is that there will always be a time to do the right thing or be time to do the right thing. Why did not, why did Ravani not tell them? He didn't want them to leave. He was finally happy. He finally had friends. And so on one hand, he didn't break the promise. He didn't go tell anybody. On the other hand, he didn't do what he needed to do to really protect them, which was tell them right away. Inspired by Donnie's nasty insult, calling Ravani and Virginia the creep and the freak, Ravani and Virginia decided to name their boat the Creepy Freak, which is perfect because their boat was made out of a coffin. The Ragabonds had plans and rules to help them stay safe, stay unnoticed or uncaught. Uh, one of their rules was the rule of repeating, which meant that Uh, one of their rules was the rule of repeating, which meant that when when they had to pretend or fake someone out, or you know, put put on a scene to get away with things, the the rule of repeating meant not to use the same plan over again. Uh, at least too, too many times, too close together, not do the same plan. So the plan that they decided to do, when Ravani's mother said she wanted to come over and bring dinner, was called the Montgomery. So part of that, it involved um Beth being in the kitchen pretending to be the mother and um the the kids just pretending that the parents were actually in the house. But Ravani's mother could never actually see their parents. They had to trigger into thinking there was adults in the house. Benjamin, he had a special, his special skill was being able to do any body function, like burp, fart, throw up, diarrhea, cry, nose bleed, anything like that Benjamin could do, like that, just on cue, he could do it. And so they had a code word disaster, that if anybody said it, Benjamin would throw up. After Ravani's mom went back home and and he was alone again with the ragabonds, he had lunch with them for the first time. And they had sort of a ritual for how they, how they did lunch or did any meals. First, like I said before, they all had jobs, they all had responsibilities. So for lunch, Ravani poured the milk, that was his job. He was surprised that they had sandwiches, but not both peanut butter and jelly at the same time, because the ragabonds were living they were spending as little money as they possibly could, they needed to make their food last. Eating peanut butter and jelly together in the same sandwich was a luxury that they did not have. So it was time to eat and Beth asked, who will be the hungry? And Annabelle volunteered to be the hungry. What what that meant was, uh, everybody took a sandwich except for that one person who volunteered for each meal. It would be different kids each time, but Annabelle did not take a sandwich. And so, and then they told Ravani to take his sandwich and he felt weird about it, because there's Annabelle sitting with nothing on her plate. But then after that, uh, it was, it was asked, who will, who will help, who will help the the hungry? And everybody said that they would help. So each of them, including Ravani, tore off a piece of their sandwich and then gave it to Annabelle. So she ended up with probably more than a full sandwich on her plate, because they all shared with her. She said, thank you, and they all answered, what's what's ours is yours. So this ritual happened at every meal, but with a different one of them being the hungry. Virginia said that Mister Mister Croward's house was a seven-story house. But it wasn't seven stories tall, it was a house with seven different stories inside it. Because each of the kids in the house had their own story and they were all together in one house. Beth's special skill, her her magical power, her skill, was being able to perfectly imitate people's voices or sounds. So that's why I put the parrot, because a parrot can imitate sounds and voices. So that was what Beth was able to do. And that's what she did from the kitchen. When Ravani's mother was out in the living room, she sounded like a grown woman. And and talked to her and made excuses why she couldn't come in to the kitchen and meet her face to face. Colt's special skill was the ability to forge signatures, fill out documents, any kind of writing in documents, things like that. Winnie's special was that she was able to throw anything and hit it right on target. So that's who threw the rocks way back at the beginning when uh Ravani was being tortured by by Donnie and Stevie and they were holding him down and trying to spit in his mouth. It was Winnie who was throwing the rocks and hitting Donnie so that Ravani could get away. Uh, Benjamin's special was the ability to do any kind of body function on cue. And Annabelle, the youngest, the the five-year-old, had not yet figured out what her special was. They knew that she had one, she just didn't know what it was yet. Ravani and the ragabonds all went to the Fourth of July carnival together. And but they didn't have a whole lot of money, they had, they started with one nickel, but uh Winnie was able to win a whole bunch of money, a bunch of nickels by going to the different booths and playing, like anything to do with throwing, throwing darts, throwing balls, popping balloons, uh, any, any throwing rings onto things, anything that she threw, hit perfectly. So she was able to win a bunch of money and then they were, they all had money to to spend on rides and things at the carnival. Ravani and Virginia went into the haunted house. And when they were inside there, Virginia told him that she wanted him to kiss her. But she said it wasn't romantic, it was practical. Because she said that a first kiss would be, it should be with someone that you really trust and someone that's special. And she just sort of wanted to take away the the nervousness of a first kiss by having it with Ravani. So Ravani kissed her. And then she said that uh he tasted like a corn dog and that cupcakes were better. The scrap of paper that the hunter found on the dirt road next to the orphanage led him to Endless Days Retirement Home. He went through the numbers and figured out that that's where the phone number was from. And so he went there, he went to the retirement home where Mister Croward was. So he was in there, crept in there at night, real dark, just had a little, little small light that nobody could see and was going through the filing cabinet, trying to find uh Mister Croward's or or any, actually any file uh with a clue of the address where the ragabonds might have gone. And so the way he figured out that it was Mister Croward's house was it, it was the one file that inside the address, the former address where the residence of the retirement home was crossed out in black marker. So he knew that that's where they were. Well, if it was crossed out, how would they figure it out? Enough of it was left that he was able to to whittle it down and figure out that they were in Slaughterville. So he set out after them. Ravani had the registration form that that uh that Colt had filled out, because remember Colt could forge and do signatures like an adult. So he had done the registration form for Virginia and Ravani to be able to compete in the Red River Raft Race. But it, the paper was there and so Ravani's like, oh no, I need to, I need to run it to the place and turn it in, to turn in the registration. So he grabbed it and he decided to take a shortcut and he was going through the forest and Donnie caught him. And not only did Donnie rip up the paper, cause he didn't want him to be, he didn't want him to compete in the River Raft Race, he didn't want him to have friends, he didn't want Ravani to feel good about himself. Donnie liked things the way they had been, where he was being able to just bully Ravani and do, treat, treat him as badly as he wanted to. And he noticed that Ravani was starting to change, starting to stick up for himself and that bugged Donnie. So not only did he tear up the registration for the raft race, he handed uh Ravani a hammer and forced him to bash up all his birdhouses that he had built and hung in the forest uh in the Haven Hollow, because Donnie found it. And uh Ravani had to do it because Donnie told him that he would tell the secret of the ragabonds if he didn't do it. Ravani went back home after smashing his birdhouses in Haven Hollow in the forest and he was feeling really bad, really awful. And he went into the garage and his dad was in there doing some work, building some things. And his dad noticed that he was really bummed out, he was really sad. So he asked him what was going on and Ravani told him everything, not not about the ragabonds, but he told him about uh Donnie making him bash up all the houses. And also, without telling the secret, he told his dad that he had he had done the wrong thing by not telling his friends something when he should have. By keeping it to himself, just for his own selfish reasons, that he didn't want them to leave. He he let his friends down. And so what his dad told him was that sometimes when you break something, when you fix it, if you fix it right, it ends up being stronger than ever. So he also told Ravani that the the reason he fell in love with Ravani's mother was because she helped him see the beauty in the world that he did not see before. She helped him really see all the beauty and wonderful things in the world. Um, Ravani's dad was kind of a, not a macho man, but like a strong, you know, burly guy. And Ravani was not a very strong masculine sport kid. And so he felt, Ravani felt that he disappointed his father and he told his dad that. He said, I'm sorry for not being the son that you wanted. And Ravani's father told him, you are exactly the son that I want. So Ravani had something that that Donnie did not have, and that was the a dad who really loved him and accepted him exactly how he was. Um, and so tha- that was really good, that Ravani and his dad had this conversation. They didn't talk that much because uh, his dad, you know, wasn't a big talker and they didn't have a whole lot of things in common, so it was really good that they had this talk. Another meat and slaughter butcher reference. The Slaughterville School's mascot was the cleavers. This is a cleaver, you use it for cutting meat. Donnie and Stevie's raft for the Red River Raft Race was inner tubes that they tied together. So that was their boat. Ravani, Ravani's and Virginia's coffin boat was doing really well. And they were taking the lead, but all of a sudden they sprang a leak and the coffin started sinking. And at that point, Virginia finally admitted to Ravani that she did not know how to swim. So it was sinking, she was in the water, she was starting to drown. Uh, Ravani was trying to pull her out of the water, save her. But this is true, when people are actually drowning, they often, they they panic and they start thrashing around and fighting. And if anyone's trying to save them, uh, they'll, they'll fight the person just because they're panicking. This started to happen. Then Annabelle jumped in to try to help, Annabelle couldn't swim either. Finally, Mister Chin, Lee Chin, who was the owner of the Bread and Butter Bakery, he jumped in and and saved them. So everything ended out, ended up okay. It was great that nobody drowned, but Ravani mentioned, well, they they didn't win the race. He and Virginia didn't win the River Raft Race. And Virginia said, no, she considered it a win. They got the chance to sail a coffin down a river, uh, they didn't drown. And they were there underneath the fireworks. So it was a pretty good day. She she considered it a win. Basically, it's how you look at things. At the carnival, Ravani saw Do- Donnie telling, talking to the sheriff uh and telling him about the ragabonds. Donnie was telling the sheriff everything. And not only did Ravani hear him telling the sheriff, but so did the hunter. So Ravani knew it was time to take off, running to go warn the ragabonds that they better hide, they better leave. Irony means, or when something is ironic, it's when uh the situation is the opposite of what you would expect. So the irony with the hunter is that he was a vegetarian. And there they were in a town made of meat, it's the Slaughterville. But uh, the thing is, is that the hunter, you know, hunters are predators, they're, you think of them as as wanting to hunt and kill and eat meat, but he only ate vegetables, the hunter. Tristan thought his magic was broken. And the reason he thought that is because he wasn't hearing any kind of magic or a voice or feeling or thought, nothing was telling him to leave town. Always before, if someone was on their trail and getting close, the magic would say, run, get yourselves together and run. And Tristan didn't hear anything. But the the possibility was that even though it didn't seem like it, maybe they shouldn't run. But but it looked like they better, because uh their secret was out and the hunter was after them. While they were getting out of the house, running, all the ragabonds, suddenly Annabelle realized that she had forgot her binoculars. And so they told her, no, no, don't do it. But she ran back to the house to get her binoculars. The other kids ended up getting caught. Uh, Annabelle was running toward the house, but the other kids got caught in nets. And then the hunter snapped handcuffs on Ravani's hands. So he had most of the kids and he took them to put them into the, into the truck. But Ravani had an idea. He just took off running. He had, his hands were still in handcuffs, but he took off running after, you know, to the truck. He ran ahead of the hunter and he crawled underneath the ice cream truck. And he unscrewed the oil plug, which is the the cap that keeps the oil inside the engine. If an engine of a car or a truck or whatever doesn't have oil, eventually, pretty quickly, if someone's driving it, it will just start to burn. It will, it will, the oil is to keep it smooth and running and cool. And if there's no oil, it's gonna stop running. It's just gonna start smoking and then stop and be stuck. And so Ravani didn't, didn't tell yet. He put the plug in his pocket and didn't tell. He ended up in the, in the milk truck with the other kids. They all got locked in there. But it was stopped because the the hunter couldn't drive it, it was, it was stuck. When the hunter was gone, looking for Annabelle, Annabelle came to the truck. And this is when she figured out her special was picking locks. And she picked the lock of the ice cream truck and let everybody out. After Annabelle picked the lock on the ice cream truck and let everybody out, they were still running from the hunter and they were in the forest. And they were pretty much cornered by the hunter, but then all of a sudden, uh, the cow, Lucky, remember, Ravani had set Lucky free at the beginning of the story, came bursting out, charging, and Ravani yelled, bear! So the uh, the hunter was scared, he actually thought it was a bear. After they got away from the hunter the second time, they needed to find a telephone so that they could call an angel, one of their helpers for help. And the nearest place they could think of to go was the slaughterhouse. So they ran to the slaughterhouse. And they went in there and they needed to get into the office, Mister Skinnerster's office. So the the hunter followed them in there and uh there, a whole bunch of things happened there, was trying to get in uh and was right after them. But they got to Mister Skinnerster's office and Annabelle picked the lock, he wasn't, he didn't hear her picking the lock because he had Mozart music playing. And they got in there, uh. And so then they told him what was happening, about the hunter chasing them and and putting, locking them in the truck. At the beginning of this video, I mentioned that Mister Skinnerster was a really good guy. And he said that he did not, he hated people who threw kids into trucks. And also people who lied about having ice cream, which is what the hunter was doing by driving around in an ice cream truck with no ice cream. So he was gonna help them. And Ravani's parents, they came, remember, they wanted a big family. So the idea was that Ravani's parents were going to adopt everyone and they would make it legal and then they'd be able to stay in town. But the thing is, is that they didn't have any legal proof that that they should have the ragabonds. So they kinda fixed that up. Colt fixed documents, uh Mister Skinnerster was also the town judge, so he was able to do that. Hortense from the newspaper, she came, remember, she could make up really wild stories, so she came and helped. And so what they needed though, is they needed the signature of the hunter. Uh, and so what they needed though, is they needed the signature of the hunter to make it legal. So that they would be able to keep the Ragabonds. Tristan had a bit of a problem with the idea of being adopted because he said, well, the Always and Forever book says that, uh, that they would, they would wander and rescue, always and forever. But then it was pointed out to him that there was an ending to that. It said, until we find where we belong. Which was right there, in the town of Slaughterville, which is going to change its name, and with Ravani's parents, and with Ravani. Hortense Wallenbach came with her camera and they needed the hunter to sign the form. They had Beth on the phone pretending to be Madame Mordosa. Remember, she could mimic anyone. And so the hunter listened on the phone, thought that it was really Madame Mordosa. And then, uh, Hortense Wallenbach told the story of the Ragabonds' parents, who had been looking for them all this time. She said that the Ragabonds' parents were, their mother was the astounding Astoria, who was a contortionist. A contortionist is a person who can bend their bodies in seemingly impossible ways. And their father was Indigo the Indestructible, a human cannonball. So both circus workers who had been traveling and didn't know where their children were, but they were looking for them all this time. And as my favorite books do, it ended happily ever after. The town of Slaughterville changed its name. Uh, the cafe where Fred had worked before, Fred's Cafe, turned into Someplace Special. That was the name of the cafe now. It was only open for breakfast because it was owned and operated by Ravani's mom. And she was now mother to eight children, the seven Ragabonds plus Ravani. So she ran the cafe. What happened to Fred? Fred moved to Hollywood, California to become an actor. He had gotten some parts in a commercial and was working on it, was also working as a waiter in a restaurant, but he was living his dream. Skinnerster's Quality Meats turned into Skinnerster's Scrumptious Sauces. Where Mister Skinnerster was working on sauces without meat. There was no slaughterhouse anymore. Uh, and he was working on a roasted marinara sauce. Mister Chin started making, cooking, baking cookies and cupcakes as well as bread. So he started trying new things, inspired by Virginia. And one of the things that he created that was new was his newest brownie with roasted red chilies in it. He called it the flaming fudge brownie. And it was delicious. So people started doing things differently. Tristan started working at the cafe with Ravani's mom running it. So they had the money to pay the rent for Mister Croward's house where they were living. So Ravani and Virginia and Annabelle lived with Ravani's parents in Ravani's house. Mister Croward's house, Tristan, Benjamin, Winnie, Beth, and Colt lived there. But every day they got together for dinner, all of them together as a family. The town of Slaughterville became Someday. The name of the town was Someday. And there was a sign at the beginning of the town when people drove in that said, welcome to Someday. You're already here. So that, in a nutshell, is a summary of the entire book, The Midnight Children by Dan Gaiman Hart. I've made a quiz on the book, uh, with three hundred and ninety-eight questions and answers. You can get them as a PDF and Excel. They come together. Uh, so the Excel, you can, you can edit it if you want. Uh, I also made it as a Quizlet quiz. So you can get the link and the password for that. You can get these at my website, www.obob.me, which is the Battle of the Books Quiz Center. If you have any questions or comments or anything you would like to say, uh, please reach out to me at my email, fourteen obob@gmail.com. Uh, I wanna make it clear that I started this, writing the quizzes here in Oregon. Because I was, I started with my own little group of five kids that I was coaching and it just sort of grew. And now I've been doing it for over ten years. So there are over six hundred quizzes in the website. So there's quizzes now that people are using in all different states. I'm just trying to say, this is not just for Oregon anymore. Um, so anyway, please follow me on Instagram, at obobquizzes. Befriend me on Facebook at Dr.Lisa.Rodriguez. And please, most of all, subscribe to my channel. This is my first attempt at this. But I like doing it. It's, it's pretty cool. And, and I, as a, as a former teacher, a retired teacher, I also know that it's good to do things in more, more than one way. Not everybody learns best by reading and looking with their eyes. Hearing the book, talking about it, may get it more ingrained into your memory. So I look forward to getting this YouTube channel going. And definitely working on polishing it up and getting better each time. And I look forward to hearing from you. Happy reading.